The Chair will call the June 3, 2014, meeting of the City Council to order if you'd rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lasco.
Here.
Alderman Kahnman.
Here.
Alderman Jobb.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Thailand.
Here.
Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here. Before we move into the agenda, for anyone that may not be aware of it, Tom Armstead passed away on Sunday, and for those of you that have been around city government, you know that Tom was our fire chief in return, retired after 28 years of service and then spent 10 years as the state fire marshal. If you'd just join me in a moment of silence for him. First thing we have on the agenda tonight is a proclamation for the Alzheimer Association. Proclamation reads that whereas Alzheimer's disease is a devastating type of dementia that ravages memory and behavior and is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas approximately 5 million people are currently living with this disease, and whereas almost two-thirds of the people suffering from Alzheimer or dementia are women, and 60 percent of caregivers are women, and whereas Alzheimer's disease and dementia constitute the most expensive conditions to manage in the nation's with an estimated cost of $215 billion this year, and whereas Alzheimer's Association is an organization that is committed to research into the causes and treatment of Alzheimer's, and whereas the Alzheimer Association provides support to families that are infected by Alzheimer through 24/7 helpline at counseling centers and on their website, and whereas the Alzheimer's Association raises money for their efforts through their annual Walk to End Alzheimer's and through volunteer events throughout the year. Now therefore, I, J. Michael Houston, Mayor of the City of Springfield, hereby proclaim the month of June 2014, the Alzheimer's Disease and Brain Awareness Month in the City of Springfield in recognition of the disease and of the Alzheimer's Association's efforts to spread awareness and support Alzheimer's disease. Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion, dispense with the reading of the minutes of the May 20, 2014, City Council Meeting, and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded at discussion.
A discussion, Mayor. I'd like to, excuse me, I'll wait for the passage of motion.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open.
Looking up above, is that right? I'm in his vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to be recorded, City Clerk. Madam Clerk, I'd like to be recorded as a present on ordinance 2014-211, which is a workers' comp ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is, agenda number is 2012-123, 2012-376, 2013-174, 2013-376, 2013-397, 2014-024, 2014-085, and 2014-209 remain tabled or in committee. Would anyone wish to bring the NAPA contract out of committee to have an up or down vote on that? Okay. The Chair will take Agenda Number 2014-224 out of order. The ordinance approving the appointment of Arden J. Lang to the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-224 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded for passage. Mrs. Lang attended the committee of the whole and did make a presentation. She's now with us tonight, but she is a retired attorney from the Office of the State Attorney and Defenders Office where she practiced law for 20 years. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open.
Holdman Kirk.
Motion passes 10-0. Next item on the agenda is number 2014-210, an ordinance approving a contract with Hiller Heinz LLC in amount not to exceed $79,000 to provide recommendations to the City of Springfield for implementation of an inspector general position. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-210 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for passage. We have two gentlemen who have signed up. Normally, we put a time limit on people who sign up to speak. They were at the committee of the whole and because they had a presentation to make and because we didn't have a full City Council meeting, the presentation is going to be tonight, so we're not going to do a time limit. First, we have Mr. Ken Boucher, and if you would just introduce yourself and state your address for the record.
Yes, sir, thank you. My name is Ken Boucher. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Hiller Heinz, 30 South Wacker Drive, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Men and Women of the City Council, thank you for taking the time for hearing the presentation today on the proposal that we've put forward through the City Council. Again, my name is Ken Boucher, and I wanted to talk to you just very briefly, and I'll be respectful of the time limit, about the need that we've seen in a variety of places for an inspector general's office and some of the different things that have led to it and what this proposal would bring about, although I don't know how I get the slides advanced.
Here's the controller.
Oh, thank you. So, some of the key pieces that we've talked to Alderman about and we've looked at in the media over the course of the last several years, there's been an erosion in a couple of areas. First off, really that address the issues of the need for an inspector general, and sometimes these issues come out, and we've seen them in a number of places. Either they can be embedded into a government, or they can be one-time, single occurrence issues that really make the media and they look like they're embedded in the government. But either way, they highlight some of the issues that needed to be addressed, addressing problems in a very reactive manner, moving forward quickly when you're in crisis, lack of a prevention-oriented methodology to address problems before they become crisis, really the erosion and the minimization of the roles of city government, and really a negative perception that city government has not addressed the needs of government within their employees' ranks. So, when these things occur, and I want to take a step, I'm going to go in a minute in some of the experience that we've had in here, but what we see is that they become evident in situations like procurement problems and compensation disparities. We see workplaces that are driven by fear largely because the rules are not really enforced. And what happens is when an inspector general's office takes hold and really starts to become effective, you see these issues come to the top in ways that no one ever believed they existed. And they're often identified through employees who were previously afraid to come forward, through issues that have been buried, and people just have a general fear that they don't have a place to turn to. And what we found, even in working with several city councils, with state governments and municipal-type entities, that the boards like yours and councils like yours have never really engaged this issue because they didn't believe it existed, and there often isn't the evidence that you think until it gets put in place. The big picture issues, the ones that make the media, are there, but once an inspector general's office comes in, you really start to see these issues come forward, be able to be addressed, and to create a much healthier workforce. So, the presentation today really focuses on three key areas. We're ready to come in and help do, and one is to create a high-level review of your need for an inspector general's office, to really validate those things that we think may be present and to bring you factual representations back to you on why you would need that, to create a blueprint for you with options on how you would create that inspector general's office, and then to assist you in setting up the methodologies for how you decide to move forward. Now, there's several different ways that you can do this. We've helped implement this in federal agencies, both in the Department of Defense and in Customs and Border Patrol. We've worked at state-level agencies, major cities and smaller cities, and they really, to be honest with you, they implement them differently. They implement them based on local needs, based on the desires of the governing bodies. So, and that's the options that we would bring forward to you. Why we're uniquely qualified, I heard last week that one of the questions that you had is, some of the Alderman's had, is that why we would accept an out-of-town company to do this type of work? And I would tell you, it's, one, we're very experienced. We've done this several times. We come in without bias. We're not really connected to the City of Springfield in any way, although we do have one of our executives who works and lives in Springfield. I myself spent a career with the state police and spent several years both working and living in Springfield. But we're not really connected to city government. We have deep experience, as I said, in this area, developing inspector general's programs. We have no connection either politically or financially to the city or to the vendors that serve the city, and we're a company with demonstrated integrity. Our executives all carry clearances. We're a DoD-secured facility. We do a lot of different types of work that require us not only to maintain that integrity but to demonstrate it. We've done, as I started to allude to, we've done this in the past at several places. I won't read them all to you, but there's major cities, there's local units of government and offices like Metro, which we went in and spent several years building their inspector general's program. I think that when you look at our proposal, what we're looking to help you do is to build an inspector general model that builds on these 10 key building blocks. Most important is going to be that the inspector general's office is developed and moves forward with mission and authority from this council, and it's going to, it will really need to be an office that you can believe in, that you could participate in, and that you have oversight on to, that it has effective leadership within government, that you create a model that's clear to people who both want to use it and people who want to review the type of work that they're doing, that has access to experts and specialists. You don't need to build an entire agency to do this, but you will need to have an inspector general that can rely on financial auditors or investigators and a variety of different pieces, and we will help you build that model if you choose to move forward with this proposal. And that it has the funding and budget to carry it on, and what I'm not suggesting is that it needs to be a large budget, but it needs to be a sustainable budget for an inspector general's office to operate. Again, we'll begin by conducting a high-level review and demonstrating back to you in a report your need for an inspector general's program. We'll create that blueprint, and then we would assist you in establishing that program, whether it be through RFP, whether it be through internal hires, however you choose to move forward. I think that in the end, the type of transparency that you get brought from an inspector general's program, you can't get anywhere else. It's very difficult to have that unbiased, on-budsmen-type program for your employees and your citizens to come to, to register complaints, to be looked at fairly, and to be reported back to the governing body for effective action. This is one of the most effective ways we've seen across the country to work, and we look forward to working with you on that if you so choose.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See, you have, you say, in your presentation, we provided comparable services in the past in major city police departments, including Chicago. I received a copy, actually, of the inspector general's ordinance from Chicago.
Yes, ma'am.
Why would we pay you to give us information and we can just get, number one, let me go back, number one, we know we need an inspector general. Okay, there's no question about it. We know that we've needed one for a whole lot of lawsuits that we've been involved in. We know that. So, we don't really need anybody to come and tell us that we need that. We know we need it. And we also, I don't know that we need someone to come and invent the will for us, because we have what I can determine to be a shell, something that we can draw from out of Chicago. So, I'm just, why would we pay you $79,000, number one, to do the things that you say you're going to do, and then you would say that in the interim, you would serve in that role? Why would we do that?
Well, I think there's several reasons. First, Springfield's not Chicago, and I think you should be thankful for that. They do have an Office of Inspector General. They also have an Office of Inspector General, I'm not sure of the exact title, but of Legislative Review. They have an independent review authority. They have, I think, I don't know exactly how many, but at least the three that I named, independent bodies that do such types of review, and they have inspector general programs within their different divisions because their government is so large. I don't think you could really compare the type of work that they have to do to what you will need to do. Now, in essence, it will be the same, but I do believe you're right. There are other models that you could look at, and I think part of what we do is, first we'll come in and talk to you, and we would work with the city government to learn what it is particularly that you're looking to do and how deeply you want to be involved and help you mold the program to work for the City of Springfield. Put the rules in place that are consistent with your rules of operating, and then implement procedures, help you implement procedures, and put a process in place where your employees and citizens can come forward and contact you. Now, I would think that you probably could, if you were going to put full-time people on it, look at a variety of ordinances and bring forward other examples and build that. I could tell you that our group has done that. We've done it in a lot of places. We know what works well in places. We know what works not so well, especially when you get into mid-sized cities, and we would help you navigate that. I don't for a minute mean to say that you can't do this on your own. You're all very intelligent people. You're governing a large city. You probably could if you had the energy and time to put into it, but this is an option for you to help push it forward faster, get it into place, and implement best practices that have been tried in a number of places, not only the City of Chicago.
Okay. Why wouldn't, why couldn't we put out RFP for individuals such as yourself, maybe former state police, maybe former federal agents, to, who might be interested in a position because that, they have a background, they have an investigative background, to come in and just like take a look at the ordinance that Chicago has? Because one of the things, you know, there are maybe 10 things that they do, and one is to receive and register complaints and information concerning misconduct, inefficiency, and waste within city government.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, there's an investigative piece. Why wouldn't we just do an RFP, have individuals submit proposals explaining to us what they would do, and then have them do it? Pick someone who would be willing to step in, do it, and step in? Because, you know what? I guess I just have a problem, a real concern about spending $79,000 to have you, number one, tell us what we need, look at our city, and then help us find someone who can do, who can be the inspector general or do the job of an inspector general, when we could cut out you and just do an RFP? Now, and in terms of the integrity piece, in terms of someone who has no ties to city government, I would be willing to bet that there are a number of those individuals, retired judges, because we're talking integrity, retired judges, again, retired FBI people, retired state police, attorneys, any number of individuals might, would be able to come in and do that.
So, I don't mean to in any way indicate that there aren't other people that could have the integrity to do this program, or there aren't other people with the experiences that could do this program. All I could tell you is that we are very experienced at doing this. We have a number of places that we demonstrate very successful programs that we can give references on, so we bring that to the table. Secondly, you could put this out for an RFP, and you would wade through those, and your cost probably could be less, could be more, I don't know how it would come out, but we also are a competitively bid program. I mean, you're buying this through professional services, but the way most of our clients buy it is through a competitively bid GSA program. It's a federal government contract that we apply for, we're assessed for a variety of different skills and capabilities, this being one of them, and then state and local government can buy off that contract as if it was competitively bid. Your procurement agency can explain that to you. It's available through state and local agencies, which is another option. But you certainly do have the ability to go through an RFP process. I would find it hard to believe that you would find anyone in the Midwest that has the experience that we have. Now, there's a couple of firms around the country that have done this type of work at the level that we have, but they're few and far between. So, if you would bring in a judge, you would bring in someone with equal or possibly even more integrity than us, but they wouldn't have the same amount of experience. You could bring in someone who was an inspector general that actually understands how to run these programs, but they wouldn't necessarily have the experience of bringing in best practices from around the country from some of the work that we've done in a variety of different places. So, I present that as why I would suggest we are a good option, but I don't for any means say that we're the only option.
And finally, what about the interim piece? So, you're going to work through this, you're going to have meetings with stakeholders, and then while we're trying to make some determinations, you're going to, your company will be the inspector general in the interim. Is that correct? Is that, did I?
Part of the offer of the proposal is that we will help set up the program in some of its important building blocks, giving employees and citizens a voice, opening a hotline, looking at key issues while you're making a determination. Now, that wouldn't start until the City Council made a determination on the type of program that you would want. We would, as part of this proposal, we would stay and help you with that. There is, that's laid out in the proposal, the hours and time that would be spent on that, but that is not the full-time IG. That is really a way for you to get the program up and running and moving forward in a quicker way while you're determining who and how you want to hire your permanent inspector general.
Okay, but it says establishment of an interim office of inspector general, so you wouldn't be running that office?
Yes, we would until you placed someone in there.
Okay, thank you. So, how are you, are you going to have someone here in Springfield running an office, or are you going to be doing it long distance?
We would have someone here. We already do have someone here. We have another member of the state police who is also now our Director of Technology that works with our clients on security technology, who has participated in a lot of programs. We would also bring in local investigators, people with experience that we would bring on. We can't have someone in every city that we work in, but it's not fiscally responsible for us to bring in people that you can find locally for the skills, and that we would work with you on how we would bring those people forward.
And all of that is going to be up to and including $79,000, or a little bit of change.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Lasco.
Yeah. My question is about, in the study, would you, would you be doing a feasibility study on cost effectiveness of an inspector general's office here in Springfield? And giving us, like, comparison numbers about?
Yes. I could tell you that what many of the governing bodies find particularly useful is different examples of how a program can work and the cost related to that. And they generally look at, do you bring in a full-time person? Do you outsource it? Do you hybrid of the two? And we would give you models, and we would show you how they are working in other places so you can make a decision on both cost and the level of activities that you would want to be doing.
But would you have real-life scenarios, real numbers from other areas?
Yes.
Okay. Because my only concern is, you know, this is the taxpayers' money, and before we want to put a lot of money into an office like that, you know, we got to see cost of fact, just absolutely, and I just want to make sure you're going to touch on that.
Yes, absolutely. That's part of the proposal, and we will absolutely give you examples and costs on those examples.
Thank you.
Fred, there. Alderman Turner.
My question's more, I guess, for Todd, but you can jump in if you've got some experience with it. My biggest concern all along is that I don't quite understand, when looking at the establishing and administering of an interim office, if we're creating a position, and this is the part that I'm kind of hung up on, the City Council has the ability to set the money aside for this contract, but we don't have the ability to hire or fire.
That's correct.
So, once this position is established, don't take this the wrong way, Mayor. The mayor could turn around and pick someone and put them in the position as an acting, and the City Council would not be able to stop that.
I think that's essentially correct, that is the procedure right now for the Office of Inspector General to set forth in the city code. There's also the consent decree, which states that all of the executive functions will be performed either by the mayor, the city clerk, or the city treasurer. And for that matter, the inspector general position is in the section of the city code that's a part of the executive section of the city code. So, I think you're correct.
Right. Well, the consent decree requires all appointments to be made by the mayor. The only issue then is whether they're subject to the consent of the City Council. So, and the consent decree controls over everything. So, I think if the council wishes to set up a situation where some person is appointed other than by the mayor, then you're going to have to go back and get the court to revise the consent decree.
I guess my problem with it, and it has nothing to do with this administration or any other particular administration, it's just looking at the big picture. If you're trying to have someone investigate illicit or suspected acts, having that person be directly under the mayor's office where they could just turn around and say, if you're fired, and they're gone, doesn't exactly give that position a lot of power. If that person starts looking into something and the mayor doesn't want them looking into it, that mayor could eliminate that person, is what I'm seeing. And I would suggest, then, with what you're looking at, I don't have a problem with looking at this on a contractual basis or having a contract to have things looked into. I have a problem with the creation of a position. I don't want another six-figure salary on the city payroll. I don't want another person who reports to the mayor. And outside of trying to find some way to get around the consent decree or change the city code, I don't see where the City Council has the ability to hire or fire a person either, and I'm a little afraid of what would happen if we do make that change. So, I don't have an answer. This is just my concern, and I'm airing it for other people to weigh in.
Alderman Turner.
I think this is the discussion that's going to come forward, the options that he can lay out. When you talk strictly position, you're exactly right, Chris, but there's nothing in that consent decree that says the council can't hire outside consultant, outside entity, outside to give us guidance, and that's what this debate's about. That's why when we talk about doing this ourselves, first of all, we don't want to have a man-pied do it, and we're going to have those kind of questions and not be able to answer them. That's why if you bring in somebody that knows what they're doing, we can set the parameters, and you just very eloquently set a parameter that says, you know what, we kind of want this to be independent. We know it can't be a full-time position, but if it's a consultant capacity-type position... to give us guidance. And that's what this debate's about. That's why when we talk about doing this ourselves, first of all, we don't want to have the manpower to do it, and we're gonna have those kind of questions and not be able to answer them. That's why if you bring in somebody that knows what they're doing, we can set the parameters, and you just very eloquently set a parameter that says, you know what, we kinda want this to be independent, we know it can't be a full-time position, but if it's a consultant capacity-type position that reports to the council or whatever, I don't, I think that's outside, I mean, you're not hiring a person, you're not hiring a figure. You're talking about options. That's what I think's been laid out by these guys, they're gonna show you those options that you can and can't have.
Could I address that briefly, sir?
In case.
I think the problem that you lay out is not only a Springfield problem, it's something that gets addressed in almost every venue that we talk to. But the reality is, is in most places, the city executive, be it a mayor or village manager, whoever is primarily responsible for managing government, has to have direct impact and influence and communications with an inspector general, because it's part of the regular, part of their work is to make sure that government works correctly. And what has to be built in is a level of openness and transparency, and then a checking mechanism. And that checking mechanism is generally a city council, a subcommittee of a city council, where everything that comes forward has to be recorded, everything has to be reported, everything is discussed, whether it be in an executive session or in an open session. And so, it's another reason why you can't take a model from one city and just adopt it. While you may find one that works for you, you have to start out by looking at what your rules are, what your consent decree can and can't allow, and help build options through that by working with your experts like the city council and yourselves. But it really will be based on, one, it has to be able to function so it can effectively move government forward, but it also has to function in a way that it's transparent, open, and honest, and that people have to be able to see that and believe it. So, it's a process to build that in every municipality that's looking for it, because they all have different needs.
Typically, a inspector general would work under a contract, so that they would be independent of any collective official.
I think you'll find it a number of ways, but we would agree that that would be one of the best ways that you would do it, that you would have a process to hire, that you would vet a person, and then put them under a contract.
Paul McGriff.
Basically, I was gonna ask a question you actually addressed there, and that was concerning, and what Frank had brought up was, I'm not sure there's gonna be enough votes to actually hire a person to be an inspector general per se, but again, I told Corey I'd backing him on the concept, the idea of looking into something to do to start making things a little more transparent around here, and I think even with specific guidelines or constraints, you could even come at this, with this contract, under a situation that we're saying, hey, now Springfield's not really looking for a position to hire a person, looking at the concept of an inspector general-type person that would work on a contractual basis. We put the money in Joe Davis's budget, you know, anytime that that money is spent, you have six aldermen agree that that's an expenditure that needs to take place, and that money's spent on a contractual basis. And basically, some conversation like that could help you come forth with a proposal you would think would be acceptable here, I think.
Absolutely. I would agree. That's kind of input and insight we would need from this body.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question. On Alderman, Thailand's question to Council Greenberg, were you saying, the ordained part of this ordinance says the council hereby authorizes an agreement with Hilliard Hines for forms and services set forth in the preamble of this ordinance? Are you saying for an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand? Are you, were you saying that if we pass this, that the mayor could hire somebody else to do this, not Hilliard Hines?
Under the current ordinance, he could, correct. This contract calls for the things that are mentioned in the bullet points in the preamble, high-level review and validation of the current need for a citywide office of inspector general, creation of a formal blueprint for the City of Springfield Office of Inspector General, and those are classic consulting functions, and that's why I, one of the reasons why I said, yes, this is a legal contract, this is something the city can do. Now, the third bullet point in the whereas clause is that assistance to the City of Springfield, once the OIG program has been formally authorized, now that would be, I believe, something that would have to be done in conjunction with the powers of the mayor and the powers of, the mayor's power of appointment. That doesn't get done until there's an independent decision by the city executive branch.
But the contract that would be signed between Hilliard Hines and the mayor of Springfield, is that correct? That's who would have to sign the contract?
Well, the mayor signs this contract if the city council chooses to approve this contract, but nothing in this contract changes our current ordinances regarding the office of inspector general, and it does, nothing in this contract changes the consent decree regarding who makes appointments.
Okay, thank you. I've got a few questions.
Well, hold on, following up on that. So, first off, on my copy of the ordinance, it doesn't say "once," do we need to worry about that as an amendment?
I think that's just a typo, it says "one," oh, and the C was left out.
Because "once" makes a big difference legally in the sentence as to when it gets established. I guess my follow-up to what Alderman Camden was asking is then, is there any wording that can be placed in there? We're not wanting to necessarily create a full-time position with this ordinance, and that, so are you.
And I don't think this ordinance could do that.
Okay.
Because the, as I said, the consent decree gives the mayor the authority to appoint all executive officers in the city, except for the, except for where executive functions are exercised by the city clerk or by the city treasurer. But other than that, the appointing authority is the mayor, and I don't think there's any way we could pass an ordinance prior to the amendment of the consent decree that establishes the executive power that could force the mayor to appoint an inspector general over the mayor's desire or not.
But in the meantime, this doesn't create a position that could be filled?
Correct.
That's, thank you. I just needed that cleared up. Sorry, Sam.
Paul Kim.
Mr. Boucher, well, thank you for coming here and for your excellent presentation. I, you listed on page six, other governmental entities that you've done similar studies for, like the city, the city police departments of Chicago and a number of cities, Metro, King County. I don't see any other actual cities on here. Have you ever done this for a municipality like you're proposing to do here?
The closest two would be, one would be Metro, which operates under the authority of a municipality, a little bit different, but with a governing body, or King County. King County is the, is the inspector general's office for the city of Seattle. By statute, it's put under county for oversight, but we went into that county, and it really is a municipal operation.
Okay, and this ordinance authorizes the expenditure of up to seventy-nine thousand. Do you anticipate, or do you have any idea whether this, what you're proposing to do for the city will cost the full seventy-nine thousand or some lower amount?
I would not, as much as I hate to say these kind of things, I would not anticipate it would be under that. As I'm sure that you're aware of, we were asked to put together a proposal earlier last year that was larger, and we were told to, it had to be reduced, so we really sharpened the pencils and got it down as low as we could. So, I would suggest that we'll be close to that number.
You mentioned in your presentation something about an RFP, were you talking about at the end, doing an RFP to hire somebody or an entity contractually as a inspector general?
Well, I think the process to establishing the office will depend on the type of office that you choose based on the options we move forward. The options will probably include external, contractual, and internal in a variety of different ways, and then when it finally comes down to it, if it was an internal hire, you'd follow your hiring practices. I'm assuming if it was an external process where you were gonna hire a consulting company to move forward, that you would do some type of competitive procurement. That would really be your procurement procedures, because something like this in a full-time nature, depending on what you choose, could be expensive, or it could be an individual. So, I think it's too early to say how that would happen, you'd have to decide on what would be the structure that you wanted before you could do that.
If we decided we wanted to do, to not hire an employee, but hire a firm to have a contractual arrangement with the city to do the inspector general duties, and we put out an RFP for that, would that be something that your firm would be interested, could do and would be interested in doing?
Yes, sir, it is something we'd be interested in doing. We have worked in places where they have asked us to stay on and do more, and we have worked in places where they have asked us to continue to be an advisor and not to be the actual body that puts in, or company that puts in for the position. And we will, will bow to what the council wants on that. But if it was openly competitive and we were welcome to bid, we would probably bid on it openly.
If we did a request for proposal on what you're proposing to do instead of hiring you right now, would that be something that your firm would submit a proposal to in response to such a request for proposal?
Yes, we probably would. Pretty much got it done.
Right. So.
Unfortunately, it's a public document, so all of our competitors have seen it as well, so it puts us at a bit of a disadvantage, but.
I see. Well, I appreciate what Alderman Jobe has done here, I think this is something that need to be, that needed to be brought forward, something I think we need to do, but it seems to me that it's something we ought to, as Alderman Simpson was alluding to, do a request for proposal on, and your firm may emerge as the best one from that, but at least let's see what other proposals might be out there, and just like a lot of people in this council said we should have done with the regard to the NAPA contract, it seems to me it makes sense. The same, the same type of reasoning or rationale would make sense in this instance, and so if there was a request for proposal, I would definitely be in support of that, if we were gonna do an ordinance to put out requests for proposals, and type of thing that Hilliard Hines is offering us here today. Thank you, Mayor.
Further discussion? Paul McGriff.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Boucher, for being here today, traveling from Chicago, and I'm sure that your firm has a deeper experience and more expertise than just about any firm that we could reach out to. Ultimately, on this question, I'm gonna be a no on the vote. Ultimately, it comes down to policy decisions and spending money, and on the policy decisions, it gets to, well, who controls the IG? Is it the alderman? Is it the mayor? Is the IG entirely independent, an unelected freelancer, so to speak? And under the consent decree, it looks like we're kind of locked into the executive controlling the IG. So, I'd hate to spend a lot of money and then come back to a conclusion that rules out many of the options that we might otherwise want to go down, but that has to do with policy issues. On the spending of money, I think for a medium-sized city like Springfield is right now, we have to go the grassroots, low-budget approach, and that grassroots, low-budget approach is all ten of us aldermen keeping our ears open, listening to our constituents, taking those phone calls, if we see, and listening to city workers, and if we see problems out there, then we can, at this city council meeting, as has been done on several occasions, we talk about it and we try to give visibility to it, and we've also got the help of the fourth branch of government right now. At this, at this city council, we're fortunate in the City of Springfield to have eight members of media here tonight, we've got four radio stations, we've got TV, we've got a daily, we've got a weekly, and Mr. Rush, you're on the second, and I'll go there. So, we've got lots of visibility, opportunity when problems arise that we become aware of as aldermen, and so I think each alderman can be a mini IG, and it's part of what's sort of been paid for, because we all get a, what is it, fourteen thousand dollars a year to listen to our constituents. So, that's, that's part of the reason for a no vote, and we've got a really alert and effective media in City of Springfield, so that's the reason for my no vote, but I really respect the alderman for, that sponsored this ordinance, to think it through and to offer, the intent is to offer, give us some expert advice, and I appreciate that.
Paul McJob. I don't think anybody around this horseshoe especially questions the importance of having an independent person or entity to be able to investigate what's going on in any form of government. We have several questions that have come up tonight, you know, in addition to, you know, the procurement issue, et cetera. So, you know, for me, obviously, first and foremost is the independence of this office makes the world of difference. I think it's a no-brainer, it has to be external, but I don't want to take away from your report, and it has to be protected. So, all those things, it almost seems like we should look into the procurement aspect of it, so it can be independent, and that way, you know, we're not, you know, for instance, what my fellow alderman stated, you know, with putting, in a sense, the cart before the horse by spending seventy-nine thousand dollars and not being able to implement it like it's supposed to be implemented, because we're blocked by the way the current ordinances are stated. So, you know, my thought is, you know, hold it, it's a good idea, we all know it's a good idea, but let's get everything straightened out before we railroad something through and realize there's nothing we can do about it to change it. So, that's my thoughts. It's seventy-nine thousand dollars of expense, and for nothing to come out of it as a potential, you know, alternative, it's not worth spending. So, thank you.
Paul McGibson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Corporation counsel, it's been mentioned that we could do contractual, and I think that may be the best avenue to go. I'm not trying to take away from what you might recommend, but if we did contractual, how would we implement it in terms of the consent decree and it being totally autonomous?
Well, I think the answer is I don't think you can, under the consent decree.
I think your office has the ability to contract people who are not corporate. We already have it since we revised the code. And I don't mean just Mr. Greenberg.
Yeah, I think, I think if you, I don't think by contract you can hire somebody who is going to perform an executive function. I think you, you know, for, whether you think it's for better or for worse, executive functions get exercised by the mayor, by the city clerk, or by the city treasurer, period. You cannot by contract hire somebody and give them executive powers and say, since we did it by contract, it's okay. I don't think you can do that. Now, there are, there are perhaps non-legal reasons why an inspector general may have a lot of authority. We're coming up on forty years now of when President Nixon tried to fire the water, well, he did fire the Watergate Special Prosecutor. He had every legal ability to do that, but he created a political firestorm that eventually swept him out of office.
Okay.
But technically, the Watergate Special Prosecutor was an employee of the President of the United States.
We have a civil service commission that is autonomous. The mayor has always said that he is hands-off, he doesn't have any control over what they do in terms of our hiring process, okay? How is that different? How would that be different than what we're trying to do in terms of the autonomous, the autonomy of an inspector general?
Well, I think ultimately, it's, you can have a civil service commission that's established by state statute, by, you know, Division One of Chapter Ten of the Illinois Municipal Code, and just like you have unionized employees who have certain rights, but it still doesn't change the executive-legislative dichotomy. The legislative can't set up a situation where it's exercising executive power even through a contract. It can enter into contracts, but it can't enter into contracts that attempt to take power away from the executive.
Who can we get a legal opinion on? I'm not questioning you.
Well, for me. I mean.
I mean, maybe the attorney general.
Well, you would have to ask for an outside legal opinion. That's, that's all I can say. Now, the attorney general will give legal opinions to the individual state's attorneys of the different counties, and they will give legal opinions to the members of the Illinois General Assembly on one request.
But not a, not a, not a missed.
No, not unless you can get a legislator or a state's attorney to ask the question on your behalf.
Paul McGriff.
Yeah, as I listened to the alderman, this is, this is the problem, because we represent people in awards, we're kind of a microism. We're kind of a microism of the city of Springfield. We all bring something different to the table. And I'm not saying this in disrespect, Mayor, because every mayor goes through this. I've been on, had a couple mayors, so they go through this. But you hear what you're saying? The problem is you don't want the guy to be under the mayor. And that's the same thing that our citizenry is saying. They're saying, we want this person to be independent. We want him to be able to investigate the council. We want him to be able to investigate the mayor. We want them to be able to get to the root of the problems. And if we, sitting here in this council chambers, are saying, you know what? That creates a problem for us if the mayor, the executive, have direct control over the inspector general. What do you think the public's thinking out there? They're thinking the same thing you're thinking. And for those that say we don't need an inspector general, but yet you're sitting here saying you don't trust our executive, really? You're saying that in two ways. If you don't trust the executive person who's going to be in charge, then that really means you do need an inspector general. Sitting here listening to you guys saying, oh, we don't want him to be in charge. Well, why? You've got to answer that question. Why? Is that because you think there's some stuff going on there, and if that guy does find some stuff, he's not going to report it? That means you need an inspector general more than you realize you need an inspector general. And no offense to you, Mayor, I'm saying this in a general fashion. Every council goes through this with every mayor. That's the whole crux of the discussion here, guys. It's about allowing somebody to tell us what we do need and what we don't need. I don't have time to write this thing. Steve, you got the time to write it? Chris, you got the time to write it? We're going to have to have somebody lead us through this. We're going to have to have somebody come to the table and say, look, this is what we think you ought to do. Then at that time, if we say, you know what? We don't want to do that. We want to keep doing what we're doing. Consultants cost money. That's what they do. I'm not real thrilled about spending money for a consultant. But if we're serious about this, and I'm sitting here listening to my fellow aldermen say, oh, man, we want this guy to be independent. We don't want him anywhere near the mayor. There's got to be a reason for that thought process. And if we're going to be open and transparent, then we're going to have to have somebody lead us down this road, and we're all going to have to trust each other, and we're all going to have to get down the road to do this. Now, what I heard corporate council say is, if you all feel worried about the executive branch, remember, we're going to get investigated too if we do something wrong. This isn't all hands-off. The treasurer has executive authority, and so does the city clerk. So once the report's done, and you do need one, and this is how the fabrics of the garment could be put together, then you can decide what you want to do and how you want to do it. Right now, we're trying to figure out where we go with this thing. And I guarantee you, if we don't get a consultant, if we don't bring this thing forward, it's not going anywhere. Because I'm sure not going to have the time to write it. I'm sure not going to have the time to ask the questions, then go out and do this kind of stuff. So the vote is really, do we want to try and move forward with a inspector general or don't we? Because I'm just sitting here listening to everybody, and it kind of shocked me about, well, we don't want him under the mayor. Well, why? That's a real problem, and that's a real problem for the public.
Alderman Simpson.
Well, I guess I'm going to have to disagree with you. Not being under the mayor, it's not a reflection on the mayor's ability to be professional or be on the up and up with regard to. But what if the individual, heaven forbid, has to investigate the mayor's office? They can't be under the mayor if they have to investigate him too. So if it's set up so that it's autonomous, you know, and I think any time that you're, you've got a situation where you want someone to look at issues within, in the city, and Springfield has many, you want citizens to be able to feel comfortable to say, I can go to someone, and they're separate from the mayor, even from the alderman, I can tell them everything I need, I know about CWP, Public Works, and won't feel like they have to tell the mayor or the alderman what I said. And I think that's just, in terms of the office of an inspector general, that's just how it should be. It should be autonomous, and so that citizens feel that they can trust, have confidence in that office, and know that something will be, their issues will be addressed in an open and fair manner.
Okay, we've got Alderman Jobe, and Alderman Thailand, and then Alderman Turner, and now Alderman Cameron.
Sorry, Mayor, that I brought up a subject that's going to take some time. I think all of our discussions here tonight proves the fact that we, I think Alderman Edwards kind of said this, that proves the fact that we need somebody like a Hillard Hines to kind of help shape and structure either a contractual position or some type of position that will be an independent voice at City Hall. Yeah, I think Alderman Lesko brings up a great point, too, that many of us, many of you around this horseshoe don't want a full-time position. When I first started talking about this, I was not trying to lie to the taxpayers or to any of you. I was just being realistic and honest what a full-time position could cost, how it's structured in other government entities. I would remind everybody, it's not new money. Our budget director set forth this $79,000 in the budget that we voted for. We just happened to move it into the corporation, I mean, into the city council coordinator's budget. And so it's not new money. It's, I think it's money well spent to kind of guide us, to kind of answer all the questions we have. I think one aspect, the inspector general position, none of us around this horseshoe created. It was created by then-mayor Karen Nacera, and it's just never fully been funded or utilized. And I think having that position in code is something we need to look at, too, in some of the reporting procedures, and see if we can even legally do it. So I think having a consultant like Hillard Hines is money well spent, and the expertise they bring will help guide us to get us to that final point.
Alderman Thailand.
I appreciate what Alderman Edwards said, kind of summarizing everything up. Listening to everyone, I don't feel that anyone is pointing at this administration or another administration. I think it's just the simple fact that we all see that there could be a problem with a person who needs to be an independent entity, whether it be an alderman being investigated, whether it be a mayor being investigated. You know, there's a number of different positions that would need to be out of contact with this office in order for this office to work. And I appreciate the presentation tonight. I appreciate Alderman Jobe answering my questions. I plan on voting for this. After my questions have been answered tonight, I went from being a maybe to a yes. I think that this is something we could use. I think it's something we could need down the road. I'm curious to see how they present that we can create this position and have it be autonomous the way it needs to be. There are several options. As you said, the clerk's office is an executive position, the treasurer's office is an executive position. Neither one of them really has authority outside of council approval to move money or do other things, so those could be places where it could be a home for. I think this, I think everyone here has made very valid points. I think the questions have all been good. I don't think any bit of this discussion's been wasted tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Turner.
I know that I get, like everybody else, phone calls, emails, letters from constituents all the time about things that they perceive to be inappropriate or that they have questions about. However, I don't think that any of us will agree that that's an appropriate way for concerns to be addressed in such a haphazard manner. And who knows what else is out there that doesn't get funneled to someone because someone just doesn't bother to pick up the phone or send an email about it? Who knows how many times someone expresses a concern to somebody, and they don't take the initiative to follow up on it? So to me, that's not a good way for us to deal with issues that come up as it relates to city government. I think that we all agree that there's a need for an operational inspector general. I don't think anyone's disagreeing with that. And I think that we all agree that that person needs to be independent, knowledgeable, and experienced. I think the issue is just how we get there. And I think that as we agree that we need that someone to be independent, knowledgeable, and experienced, we also need that same independence, knowledge, and experience to help us get there on the front end as well as on the back end. And I think that what we have before us tonight is a perfect alternative. I think that if you look at the proposal, it provides us a clear roadmap on the process and procedure to get to where we need to be in terms of having some real clear options in front of us as we move forward with the establishment of a inspector general's office, whether it be full-time, part-time, contractual. We don't have to answer those questions tonight. We don't have to answer, you know, how that office is fashioned, where it's located. We don't have to answer any of that tonight. I think the only question that we have to answer is, do we want an independent, knowledgeable, experienced entity to help us get to the point where we have those options and we can move forward with getting those questions answered and getting this office fully operational? And I think that this proposal certainly gets us there. And I would encourage a yes vote on it.
Alderman Kim.
I just had a question. Did you say, Mr. Boucher, that one of your employees or members of your firm lives in Springfield?
Actually, lives in Sherman.
In Sherman, the Springfield area.
Yes, sir. He's with me tonight. Steve Bowe, he's our director.
And he's formerly with the state police?
Yes, we work together at the state police as well.
State police and where else?
As well.
As well, I'm sorry. I work, he works with me at Hillard Hines and worked with me at the state police as well. We worked in the same command. I was a colonel at the state police, and Steve was one of my.
Okay, I see you used to work with him at the state police, and now you're still working with him. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
One more question. Let's see. Alderman reduction, I promise. Ken, has Hillard Hines ever done, have they ever done a similar study on communities of this small size for this recommendation?
For an inspector general's program, the only comparable entity, we looked at it for a smaller community. We looked at it in Lamont, and it was a non-issue. The community is just a very small suburban community. The closest comparable in size would be the metro. King County's significantly larger, obviously, Department of Defense and our federal agencies are larger. We have done significant work of this type, the consulting work, with police agencies and other government entities, but not as, not in a comparable way to the inspector general's program.
Thank you. There is no further discussion. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes eight-two. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2014-212, an ordinance authorizing execution of a tentative agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers, vocal 965. On behalf of the Office of Public Works from June 1, 2014 through May 31, 2017, the chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2014-212 on final passage. Been moved in second. Discussion?
Discussion, Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge the fine work that our labor negotiator is performing on these contracts. Nonetheless, I'll be a no vote on this contract. This happens to be the first contract that the city council, this contract with the International Union of Operating Engineers, 965, with Public Works. This was the first contract this council reviewed after the election three years ago. And that's when I began voting no on all collective bargaining agreements. We went executive session with this contract, and we talked about it behind closed doors. And I'll be talking some more in the future about why I continue to vote no on collective bargaining agreements. I think we've got to address some larger issues, finance issues, and how we, as aldermen, review collective bargaining agreements. Thank you, Mayor.
Further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes nine-one. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-214, an ordinance approving addendum B to the redevelopment agreement previously authorized by ordinance 364-10-11 and amended by ordinance 315-09-13 with the Salvation Army for redevelopment assistance utilizing central area tax increment finance funds in an amount not to exceed $1,800,000 for property located at 100 North 9th Street for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-214 on final passage. It's been moved in second. A discussion? Alderman Thailand.
I was contacted last week about this property, and I started making some calls to the county to get the actual numbers to try to piece this together. Mr. Farmer, if you want to come up, you might be able to answer some of that. I know, I know. But it's, when you start looking at all the numbers, I understand why the person was questioning what was being spent and how. I've already figured out part of this. In June of 2009, there was an assessed value of 1.5 million, 1,571,473. But the fair market value of the property was actually 4.7 million. So when the sale happened for 3.4 million, that was still under fair market value, and it made sense. But when you start adding up the numbers for what's here on the addendum B, and when our total amount of financial assistance for the city is not to exceed 1,84,707, and, you know, you've got the 30% and the 15% contingency, when you add that back up, then that means that you're looking at, first off, we've already spent a little over $700,000 in TIF funds on this project, which is where the do not exceed 1.8 is. The person was concerned we were giving another 1.8. And I explained to them that we've, you know, the new ordinance is not for 1.8 million, it's for 1,840,000.
Correct.
However, when you multiply that back up, if these amounts are 30% of the project, then that means that they're looking at investing another $3.6 million into this building, which would then, between the purchase price and the investment, put it at a total of $7 million put into this building. And then this building is right in the line of what Illinois Department of Transportation has listed for the 10th Street corridor. And I'm questioning, I don't know that we've had enough time or enough explanation to really decide if this building needs another million dollars thrown into it when it may not be there with the railroad coming through. I just feel that there's a number of things that, once I started digging into it, it was like an onion. The farther down you got, the worse it started to smell. And I'm not saying their project's bad. I'm not saying that what they're trying to do is bad. I'm saying the location, the dollar amounts, and the fair market value of the property are not adding up for me.
I understand the concerns. I would defer to the Salvation Army to respond to that.
Okay, so you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Maybe I'll concede. Isn't this a reduction, Mayor?
Yes, actually, the original ordinance that was approved was for 1.8 million.
That's right. This is a reduction.
It is a reduction. I appreciate that. I'm just looking at the project itself, period. You're voting on giving them less money. If you want to give them the full boat, just vote no.
No, no, I'm fine with the reduction. I'm questioning whether we should reduce it.
Well, that's what this does, more.
If we don't pass this, they get the higher amount.
Exactly.
But I didn't.
What had happened, they've had problems with their fundraising. So what they have decided to do is to do this in phases. So this will be the first phase, and what, and correct me, Mr. Farmer, if I'm stating anything incorrectly, but the same percentage that
anything incorrectly, but the same percentage that was used for the original 1.8 million dollars is what was used to come up with this 1,84,707. So the percentage has not changed in terms of our contribution. And the items that that one, just for round numbers, 1,85,000 is used for are all items that are TIF-eligible, so that we are covering items that by statute we can do. And they're really, I mean, it is no different than what we had done before in terms of a percent of the overall project.
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, we're funding exterior, interior rehabilitation, the architectural engineering, and contingency. That's what our funds are going to, on a smaller phased-in reduction of a smaller project.
Right, and I guess I'm more questioning because this is the only related place to ask it, is, you know, from what I could tell from the research that I did over the last few days, it, I don't think IDOT had that corridor map up when we voted on this the first time around, saying that this building was pretty much in the path of what they're looking at for 10th Street corridor. And I guess.
I don't believe that it is.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding as well, but again, I would defer.
Mr. Mayor, and it's not, because right across the street is where the planned multimodal facility is going to be.
Well, the, the map that I saw, and was provided to me, and then I verified on, at IDOT, the tracks itself don't go through the building, but the amount of space that they are requiring to be set aside for the setback and then for the, I don't remember what they titled the other, the second setback, puts about, it cuts right into the building with their lines on this map. But it's not the railroad tracks themselves going through the building, it's the setbacks that they're requiring when it goes through that section. And I guess that's the, the main concern I've got is, is, you know, I just don't want to see us, because we didn't have this information before. I'm worried that we're putting a lot of money into a building that they're going to turn around and say needs to come down.
That is, that is not the case. I mean, we can verify exactly, you know, where it is, is going, and maybe what those lines mean, but there is, there is no part of that building that is, is being taken, to the best of my knowledge. Alderman Griffin?
And actually, I'll just going to say, I'd like to verify that, too, because if that's in fact the case, like we just got done spending money on, on the Carpenter Street overpass, et cetera, we're going to make this building worth 7.5 million dollars, and the taxpayers are going to pay 7.5 million to them to move out. So we're going to inflate the value that's up to this price, and then if we have to buy eminent domain, take this building, that's the value we're going to have to pay them with taxpayer money to take it. Am I correct?
That would, that would be the way it would work, yes.
So I'm not, I'm not advocating against this ordinance for the reduction.
We need it all, but.
I'm saying that I would like Director Farmer to look into my concerns.
We can do that, sure.
And report back to the council.
Do that.
I mean, we can do that, that's not a, it's not a problem.
So are we holding this?
No, no, I'm fine with passing this. It's just a related topic, and this is the appropriate phrase, only place I could see to discuss it.
But, okay, I'm confused, because if we pass this.
What we, what we could do, and if this would be fine, we could pass this this evening. I won't sign it till we verify it.
Okay.
Is that?
Well, we are, well, as someone else already pointed out, we've already authorized the money. This is reducing the money.
Right.
That would go to them, so it doesn't hurt anything to pass this.
Actually, it's better.
No, actually, it's in our best interest to pass this.
Yes, right, which is why, like I said, I don't have a problem with holding this ordinance up. I'm saying the project itself as a whole, we need to look at before we kind of check.
But we, we already did that when we did the 1.8.
Right.
And what, the whole explanation for this is, we have a formula that we use, and we say, we're going to give you a, basically 30 percent to your project. That's what we've always told everybody. So they were doing a $5 million project, and they were getting 1.8. Now they're doing less of the project, and we're making sure that that 30 percent stays in, that's all this does.
Right.
They're always saying, okay, let's look and see what they're doing. This body already did that. If you don't support this, like somebody said, it's in our best interest to support this, and you're going to end up giving them more money than the 30 percent.
But I would just point out one thing, and that is that the way we do tax act financing, the project work is done, and then you submit bills.
Right, they have to submit.
So if they do not have the money to be able to do the full thing, they can't get the 1.8, so, but, as I sit here, I'm 99.9 percent sure there is no problem.
I don't think there's, we would have heard about it, I'm not.
Further discussion?
Just clarification, if, if by chance we screwed up, and we did do this, and we do find out it's going to come down, we can amend this to be zero. Am I correct?
We can, we will, we'll deal with it, and I will not sign it till I have verified. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes ten-zero. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-215, an ordinance authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement with Springfield Art Association of Edwards Place for redevelopment assistance for property located at 700 North Fourth Street, utilizing Enos Park Tax Increment Finance Funds in amount not to exceed 273,550 through the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-215 on final passage. So moved. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I, we had an excellent presentation on this last week at the Committee of the Whole from Betsy Dollar, the Executive Director of the Art Association, who's with us here today. And I'd also like to note that the President of the Art Association, David Reed, is here, as well as past President Steve Myers, and Don Walton, who's the architect for the project, as well as his wife, Carol Walton, who is also a past President of the Art Association. So we appreciate you're all coming here. I don't know if anyone has any questions. I guess you're here to answer them, but I don't have any, they were all answered last week.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion, Alderman Simpson?
Oh, I had.
Motion passes ten-zero. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-222, an ordinance that nexting certain described property to the city of Springfield located 2519 North Plateau Drive, owned by John Classic and Diane Classic. And the Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-222 on final passage. So moved. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes ten-zero. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-225, an ordinance directing CWLP to prepare a feasibility report regarding the placement of electric vehicle charging stations. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-225 on final passage. So moved. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, we've had two people that have signed up to speak on this. The first is Noah Sebick. Sebick. And if you would state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Noah Savage, 1612 Bent Oak Drive, Springfield, Illinois. Dear members of the City Council, my name is Noah Savage, and I am here as a representative of both Rasmussen Public Affairs and Lambu Inc. Rasmussen Public Affairs is an international public affairs firm here in Springfield, Illinois, and Lambu Inc. is an bamboo, engineered bamboo technology company. We are here to express our sincere support for this ordinance, because we feel that electric car charging stations are the future, and part of our objectives as, as firms is to raise the international profile of Springfield as a thought leader in sustainability, as well as sustainable technology and thinking. We have vast experience in this domain, having actually supported recently a European car manufacturer in the development of solar carport. And we simply wanted to express our support in this feasibility study, and we hope that CWLP will also use us as a reference, because we, we believe this is an opportunity to raise Springfield's international profile and to create a unique public-private partnership to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Shute?
He was actually a part of Lambu.
Okay. Could I, could I ask him a question, Mayor?
Yes.
Just, I was reading an article about the charging stations in the city of Chicago, and according to the article, if an electric car has a reloadable, some of them have reloadable cards, and if they have such a reloadable card, they could be charged, get a full charge within minutes or in 30 minutes or less. If they don't have that card, it takes hours, and it's very slow. Are you familiar with this technology, and you know what a reloadable card, what that is?
I'm not familiar with that particular portion. What we specialize in particular is the solar car charging technology, where we use solar power as well as the grid to.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, charge of course.
Perhaps, is Mr. Hobbie in the room? Was here, Craig, do you know the answer to that?
Mr. Hobbie, he was here until about five minutes ago, he had to leave. There are basically three levels of charging. You can charge at 120 volts, which takes about 24 hours. You can charge at 240 volts, which takes about six to eight hours. We're not aware of anything that would be minutes. Stations that, there are some very high-end Level III stations that would charge at 600 volts on direct current, as opposed to alternating current, which is what most of the grid is, that might be able to do it in an hour. But the car itself would have to be configured to take that level of a charge. So every car could not be charged at 600 volts.
So is that what a reloadable card is?
The reloadable card really only has to do with how you pay for it. It has really nothing to do with the physical aspects of getting the electricity into the battery. It's, it's how you pay for that charge.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Okay, is there any unfinished business to come before the council? Alderman Tyler, you want to mention anything about Sunday?
Yes, I'll speak to the game, and I'll let Alderman Griffin speak to the charity. Sunday at 3:00 at Robert Roberts Stadium, sometimes called Landfill Ballpark. The city will be taking on the county again in softball, and I have a feeling we've got a pretty good team this year. There's 15 on the roster that I know of, and I think that we will be fine. I don't want to talk too much smack talk, I'm saving that for Thursday morning on the radio, but I think we've got some definite ringers we managed to grab in the last couple days, right, ladies?
I thought they were looking at some.
So, all said and done, tickets are $5 for the game. Half goes to the charity, half goes to the Sliders to pay for personnel. They're, they're basically donating a lot of their time for this, this game for the charity. And the ticket is good for the softball game at 3:00, as well as the Sliders game at 5:00. And I believe they will be having a movie in the park, which is on the, there's a vote right now on springfoldsliders.com to select the movie, that will be played in the outfield after the end of the Sliders game. So there's three things going on for one ticket price. And if Alderman Griffin would speak to the charity?
Yeah, I'd like to. We did the same thing last year, and we plan on doing the same thing this year, to give any proceeds to Steve Rockford's family. Many of you know him. I grew up out in the North End, anybody grew up in the North End knew one of the Rockfords, because there's about 50 years of them, I think, out there. Every year or two, they had another kid. You know, I knew Larry, he's a city employee. Robbie and Tommy played baseball with him. I mean, everybody knew the Rockford family, they've been involved in the community for years and years and generations. Steve, as you know, was a coach at Southeast, he's a wrestling coach. He has ALS. His family's been fighting, fighting battle with this, of anybody, you know, he's the guy that keeps his head up. I've worked with him, and he's extremely positive on his outlook on how things are going. But again, this, this family can use some help. I think that's a great idea and a great charity for us to give a little time and effort to help them out. I will be saving up a little smack talk for Thursday morning as well. We had a little piece of it today. Josh and Katie from the county have been broadcasting how bad they're going to beat us.
I still think we have the better landfill there.
I think, and again, this is like the soft, the Springfield softball civil war. We've got brother versus brother, and husband versus wife, so.
Yeah, I'd like to thank both you guys. Sheeders at one end of that, I live at the other, till this is over, Will.
Heard you guys are splitting time with the dog, Willie, but he's now co-ownership. But, but again, yeah, we, again, everybody's coming together for a good cause. Again, we have one brother versus a brother, we have a husband versus a wife, and everybody's in it for the same reason. That's a good charity, help out somebody in this community. So hopefully, we get people out there. Again, five bucks for a whole afternoon of family fun is a pretty darn good, good cheap way to spend some time with your kids, to bring them out.
Tickets are available. There are tickets available in the council coordinator's office. Jeanette has some remaining. And the county has been advertising, we just found out today, Fulgenses on Sangamon is also selling tickets for $5 apiece. And as I said before, $5, half the proceeds go immediately to the foundation.
And one, one shout-out, one of the things we did this year was, anybody who's playing in the game itself was responsible, would get rid of at least 10 tickets, and everybody jumped up and grabbed them, even some of the people that couldn't play. So I'd be happy to buy 10, I'll just give them some kids to come out there. So appreciate that, guys and gals.
Is there any new business coming for the council? If not, I accept a motion for adjournment. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.